Oh, man, buddy.
Woo!
Pretty aggressive.
I know.
They have flag delusions.
Flag delusions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence. Give a prayer out to the mayor and his, her family. Brokaw?
Counselor Chamberlain?
Here.
Counselor Heising?
Here.
Counselor Schneider?
Here.
Counselor Stickley?
Here.
Counselor Tirino?
Here.
Counsel President Steers?
Here.
We have six members present. We have the four.
Can we have approval of the prior meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Heising. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Individuals to address console, Jody?
My turn?
You want to go up to the...
I actually have a few of us that are going to come up and talk.
Okay, that's fine.
That's okay?
Yeah.
All right, actually, I'm going to pass out. A gap to all of you, so thank you. Check out what we're talking about here.
So, um, the homecoming committee this year, um, got together and said, you know, basically, the feel of the community is the homecoming is going stale. Um, that's like the best way to describe it. We've gotten, you know, a lot of ridicule, we've gotten a lot of negative vibes, we've gotten a lot of negative words, negative this, negative that. And if you've never been on the homecoming committee, which I know a lot of you have, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of planning, it's a thankless job. It's supposed to be a three-year term, which for many of us, it has turned into ten to thirteen years. This is year fourteen for me. Because we don't want to see it fail. We want the homecoming to be the greatest tradition of Wasean or one of the greatest traditions of Wasean. So we want to see it go forward, um, year after year. We're hoping that we're not here year after year eventually, but, um, the, the biggest thing that we could come up with was let's move it to Biddle Park. We know that it's been talked about before in the past. We know that, um, years back, they were trying to get it to go to Biddle Park. Um, so we were coming up with lists of pros and cons, um, to have it out at Biddle Park. And I guess for a while, we were told it was because of electricity or it would never house the... And we're now being told that is absolutely not true. We can get enough power too. So, um, going forward, we, as a committee, took, um, votes and we discussed it extensively, meeting after meeting, to say, you know, well, what are we going to have to do if we move it out there? You know, what, what all is this going to entail? And like the very first thing we had to do was come up with reasons why we want to have it out there and why we feel like it would be better out there than it is downtown. Um, Mayor Hune did, uh, comment and said that she would still like to see the grand parade be held downtown because that's just major tradition. And we are absolutely okay with that. We don't have a problem with that. We've even discussed that, um, the parade was a big, uh, chicken dinner seller, so we're still going to have chicken dinners down at the parade, um, for people to purchase, like when they're doing that. So I guess just going down the list, um, the first thing is utilizing and showcasing the beautiful park as intended. Um, that park was built and given to Wasean to, you know, put it out there and have people go all the time and have events there and stuff. And we thought, what better, bigger event than the Wasean Homecoming? Another good point is we won't have to close off the streets down here, um, only for the parade, obviously, but, um, I know it, it became kind of crazy, you know, with the traffic still coming through and the city and us trying to set things up. And so no, no roads down here will have to be blocked off for three days. Um, no business interruptions. Um, people won't have to just close their business down early or whatever because they have a big, um, taco wagon in front of it, you know, so on and so forth. Trains, we don't have to stop and wait for trains. Trains won't be going through the middle of the homecoming. Um, I know that the, uh, fire department, correcting me if I'm wrong, but hasn't been able to cover the track safety due to like staffing availability and, um, they did that for us for many years, but that won't have to happen, so we don't have to make sure no one's running across the tracks and, um... Or during the parades. Oh, yeah, no, we will still have to worry about that.
Yeah, I'm afraid, but...
It will still have to. Um, it's closer proximity with more space. Um, I know a lot of people complained that this was way too spread out in the blocks that it was spread out in and you had to walk a long way to get from one end to the other and, um, so the area that we have, um, suggested out at Biddle Park is one huge parking lot with kind of like a little side street. It's a lot bigger than what we thought Biddle Park was and we more than can put the entire homecoming, um, right in one central area. And there's a ton of room to grow.
Let me add on that.
Go ahead.
Um, a lot of the complaints that we've, we've heard, uh, lately that the rides aren't big enough. You know, they'd like to see bigger rides. And the ride companies have told us, we're just, downtown isn't wide enough to put bigger rides down. We won't have that issue out here.
Because there's way more room for the ride company there. And yeah, that has been a big complaint. You know, it's either there's no kids' rides or there's no big rides or there's, you know, it's always something. It's always not making someone happy, but we would have a huge gigantic area, um, so that our ride company could bring a lot more rides.
And the, the tracks also, um, ride companies don't want to have to bring in a second generator to have rides on the south end of the tracks.
That's why they always want to go to one end only.
Right.
I mean, they used to go all the way through, but...
They have, they have several generators to do that and they're just not willing to do that.
Yeah. Um, there's way more parking, better parking spaces. I mean, you can actually drive to the homecoming and get out and be at the homecoming. I mean, I know it was kind of difficult for some people to come. They had to find a parking spot on a side street or, you know...
From somebody's house.
God forbid in someone's driveway or, you know, something like that, but, uh, way, way more parking. Um, like I kind of touched before, growth potential. That park is beautiful and it's huge and it has so much potential, so much more than what we're already doing, so we would like to see it get bigger and it can grow as, um, we go. Um, one other big thing is new people, new groups of people will be coming to see and experience the homecoming, um, because the, uh, rec, rec department is, you know, they, they're willing to make sure that there's softball tournaments, um, baseball tournaments, and these people that are... They draw huge crowds at their tournaments down there. So these people may not have ever come to the Wasean Homecoming, but when they come to the tournaments, it's going to be happening, so they're going to walk around, you know, what, what's going on? What's this all about? Um, so there will be a new, um, realm of people that are coming to see it. Um, also, sand volleyball courts, we can have sand volleyball tournaments going on. So a lot more activities going on also. Three-on-three basketball tournaments, we can utilize those areas, um, and they're willing to help us with that. Bingo can be, um, or it will be under this pavilion that has, um, beautiful picnic tables. And if we do it like in a circle or whatever, there's more seating than there was at our downtown one and it's getting kind of scary to sit on if, if you have a little bit of weight on you. And, um, scary for anyone really because it's hard to get in and out, but, um, so it will be a better, way better bingo experience. Um, and if it starts to sprinkle there under a pavilion, they won't have to run. Also, what I didn't mention to you, um, the possibility for fireworks again. Um, fireworks used to happen on the last night, you know, after all the big drawings and then they'd shoot off fireworks. Definitely not like the Fourth of July, but just a little something to, you know, end the festivities. Um, that's a possibility again.
The, the reason we don't do it now is the, the, um, train.
Train, but...
Train said no more fireworks.
I said, mm-mm.
No more, no more. That's the reason we quit doing it.
Yes. And, um, we definitely have the rec department backing us up. Thank you for coming, guys. Um, we've met with them, um, a couple of times and parks department are like nice because we told them, um, with us going out there and centralizing everything, we won't have to have two food stands, we won't have to have a separate sausage stand. We can pretty much put all of the city structures, um, the homecoming structures in one area and less structures have to go up. So that's less hassle for them, so they're pretty excited about that. And they were also excited or for it, so they don't have to put the structures up with the traffic still coming through. It's a danger, as we all know. Um, and definitely, our homecoming committee is on board and we are really wanting to push this forward. Um, it takes pretty much the whole year, um, to, to plan and execute and get ready for the next homecoming, so we want to hit the ground running and we want to get on it now, so that's why we kind of come in here to present this to you. So we get a definite, yeah, let's move forward.
Can you talk to me about what this meet, what, what the diagram means?
Oh, yeah, I forgot I gave you that. Um, Brad?
Yeah.
He drew it, so I'll let him tell you.
I went out and measured the, these areas, um, to kind of get an idea of, you know, I, I wanted to compare apples to apples. I wanted to, you know, how big of an area do we have now versus what we're, what we're going to have? So, uh, that, the parking lot, we're going to have the rides area, that parking lot is a hundred and thirty feet wide, uh, I think a thousand sixteen feet long. Um, the ride area that we have now, um, is eighty feet wide and I believe, I believe it was just about eight hundred feet long. Um, so we're, we're going to have double the area, not that we're going to fill it with rides, but we'll have it available to us. And I just kind of wanted to show, you know, where those, where these are. That's kind of what the area that we want to use for the homecoming.
The big long one is, is north end, the north end, big long parking lot.
Yeah.
Whoops.
Four diamonds are out here. Right, to the north? Yeah, yes.
Yeah, that's where the younger ones play, right? To the north of that lot, yeah.
Um, what about the, you know, I live close to where the homecoming has always happened. What about the, the campers for the workers? Would that be able to be...
Glad you asked, because there is an area...
Yep, on the east end of that big parking lot, clear to the top, they're, they're going to stay right there.
Where the measurement says one thirty?
That's where they'll be.
They will all be right out there.
It seems like it would be nice to be there for, as, in terms of like the bands also, because you wouldn't have the trains interrupting with those?
Yeah, and you have the events, the pageant, all of that, yeah.
Do you have a space figured out for the Queen's Pageant also?
We, um, had talked about the main stage, um, so where, let's see, where it's a hundred and thirty, uh, the arrow on the one thirty on the smaller, um, lot, kind of in that area, um...
Away from the ride, kind, kind of away from the rides.
Yeah, away from the rides, uh, because you, you know, the, the two noises will... So basically in this area and probably pointing this direction because everything will be in this vicinity.
So you're going to have a place for the Queen and the change?
Mm-hmm, yep, we have a, um, a snack shop and a restroom right there.
Right there, okay.
Good question. And also all of the, um, in, in their maintenance building, they have, um, lockable offices and such for, um, what we call Fort Knox when we lock up the money and have them doing money. And we have areas for all the trailers that we use, the, um, refrigerated unit, the, the, um, big trash bins, the, and that will all be away from the homecoming. Will be at the south end, you know, in or near the maintenance building.
Do you foresee putting anything on grass?
No.
Not if we don't have to. The only thing that we would is if we would get like bouncy houses or anything. No grass.
It is kind of hard in the, in, um, you know, on Fulton Street, when you're on one end, you have to walk so far and you, and you can't see, you know, that far visually to see what is, you know, like maybe there was a lemonade stand one year, well, it's not there this year, so then you have to walk, you know, do the whole thing again, so obviously that's, that just kind of solves that problem.
And our intentions so far were the entire area, um, where the rides would be, we don't want to, uh, section off everything like rides, games, food, you know, we want to stagger everything. So you walk through that whole place, you're going to see rides, you're going to see food, you're going to see games, you're going to see our crafters in there, um, which was a big hit. We're hoping to get the, um... The market, the Saturday market?
Oh.
Farmers market. We're hoping to get them back again and, and stay involved, um, just stagger everything. So there's a mix, a good mix of everything in there.
You talked about having tournaments there that weekend. What, will there be enough parking to handle both items at the same time? Okay.
Now, we, we kind of talked about that, you know, with these guys and parking for that's going to be off this map, but it's, yeah.
Yeah, there's, um, two good-sized, uh, lots and then, you know, there's parking spots that lead up to the main fields at, at Dorothy Biddle Field. Um, and then we, if we're using any of this one right here, it's only going to be this side, so there's like a lot of parking here as well. We didn't realize how much parking and how big it actually was.
It'd be nice to have some handicap accessible.
Absolutely, there will be.
Yep.
There will be.
Do you guys ever think, uh, it's like the fair does, of getting some golf carts to transport some senior citizens around from the parking lot?
Um, we never actually talked about that, but that's not a bad idea.
You know, to go back and forth, even uptown, it was a long walk for some...
Uh-huh, yeah.
Either handicapped people or elderly people.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or somebody's got a bad knee.
So the parking lots that you're talking about, I'm looking at the, the map here, um, there are the two one, the two ones to the right, so like if I'm looking at this map, you're talking about the two parking lots over here that's what we utilize?
Yeah.
Yeah, the golf carts definitely, because I mean, those seem really far away from this main area.
Yep, yep.
So, yeah, walking that, that distance would be serious.
We, we had talked about shuttling people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because originally we were thinking, you know, more parking at the high school even, but, um, if we can get away from that, that would be great.
Like you said earlier, the comment I heard from a lot of people the past few years, and I've been in town a long time, is get it too spread out.
Yes.
If you want to see the Queen pageant or watch a band and you've got grandkids going on the rides, that's, that's a long walk.
Yeah.
And it's also, like I always said, it's perception. If people go up there and it's spread out, they go back home and say, nobody's uptown.
Yes.
Nobody's there, so I'm not going.
Or there was nothing there, it's empty.
Where if it's, yeah, cram together, oh, everybody's up there, well, then I'll go. Your biggest problem, however, I think, I, I think you really have done a good job of laying this out, what and why, volunteers, you can't get anybody to do anything anymore. I'm serious. I've talked to some people and they said, we used to get churches to run everything. They don't have many members and the ones they do, they're old people.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and it's just, we use, I always use my church, Jim and Dolores Spielus were in their seventies and always worked at the hamburger stand, you know?
Yeah.
But where are the twenty and thirty years old?
Right.
If they can't get, if they don't get paid for it, they don't want to do it, so...
The nice thing about moving it over here, we're going to need about fifty percent less help.
I forgot to add that on there, I did have it in my notes, but...
Well, I think one thing you could do...
A lot less volunteers.
I know the basketball team usually runs a food stand for a while, but there are a lot of other teams and clubs.
Absolutely.
And I think the advisors could get them involved to see what they could do to help out the community and the parks and so on and get them to learn that you don't have to get paid for everything.
Exactly.
You know, that's, and I, the mayor talked to me and she said, she was glad you were coming in, but thought maybe it might be a good idea to, to put a questionnaire or opinion sheet out to people and let them air their opinions, do they want this here or there? And you said you kept flack all the time. You're probably kept flack from people that don't volunteer.
Exactly.
You know, really, they're the biggest complainers, but they, well, then sign up for something, like that.
That's kind of why we really, we're, we really don't want a survey to go out. We...
Is it going to be okay to clean up afterwards out there at Biddle versus Main Street?
It's going to be roughly the same for cleanup as out at Biddle is what it is on Main Street. It's not going to be that much different. I mean, there are some open areas, so it's a little bit more apt for garbage and stuff to blow away, but, uh, it will be no different than Matt and Hugo cleaning up after the Fourth of July out there because it's, it's all there at that time. Okay. What, what, does anybody know what kind of attendance you get out for the Fourth of July out there? Anybody have those numbers?
Well, every parking spot in there is full, plus another, probably two hundred and fifty spots where we park them on the grass, where there isn't irrigation in it. I don't know, what would you guess, maybe a couple thousand?
Well, Fourth of July too, if you go past the Catholic Church, that parking lot is packed. Everybody's in the front yard because you can see and the places across the street from that that have, aren't open at night, that have parking, but those are packed, so I don't know that that would give you just everybody that's there.
So you guys, would you, did you want to do the parade out there too or you thought about it but not really?
Um, originally, we said we'll take the whole thing out there, um, and Mayor Hune, um, suggested that it stay downtown. Uh, she, she felt that it's more of a downtown street, um, thing for Wasean, I'm not sure. I mean, we're willing to do the parade out there.
After the parade's over, then nobody's got nothing. It's like everybody's got to pack up and move.
Right.
So I mean, if, if it was there, I mean, you know, um, the stands are there, the carnies are there, food stands there.
It's a pain to line up for the, for the, for the parade, you know?
Huh?
So it's a pain to line up for the parade, you know, in town.
In town, so I mean, maybe it'd be good to just take it all out there.
I, I would just like to say, um, the six years I've been on, anybody that's up there when the parade's over, ninety-five percent of the people that are up there during the parade leave because they want to go home, it's hot, they want to go home, feed their kids, put them down for their naps, whatever, they go home anyways. So I think as far as that goes, um...
Through the parade and then...
Yeah, mo- most people go home and then come back up at five, six o'clock at night, whatever. And, and too, another thing I wanted to say about the volunteer thing, doing food, um, since we're going to be utilizing like one main area where all of our, uh, food stands and stuff are going to be, it's going to take a lot less volunteers because we're not going to have a north stand, a south stand, everything's going to be together, the barbecue tent, sausage stand, we're going to be cooking pretty much everything in one main area, so that right there is going to cut the people in half. So as far as volunteers, I'm hoping we still have as many as we had last year because we did, we, we did good, there wasn't very many shifts not covered. But with us doing it out there, the way that we've been discussing, um, I think we'll have a lot more people to use, to utilize elsewhere throughout the homecoming to volunteer for stuff, maybe to help with the tournaments, help with the shuttling with the cleanup.
Checking the restrooms.
We can throw that out there. Beth did, uh, volunteers for the last few years, she's our chair now. Um, her daughter is taking over the volunteers, but that's something we can discuss with her. You know, still reach out to all these groups that helped us last year and in the past and let them know, hey, we have some new ideas coming up, we have extra people, would, would you be willing to help with like maybe shuttling people around, picking up trash, doing things like that? So as far as, um, volunteers, food stands, things like that, I think it's going to be a lot better this year that we're going to, we're going to have, I think, hopefully more help than what we, than what we've had in the past. Thank you.
Whose decision would it be to move it out there? I mean, I don't know.
Homecoming committee.
I know you're coming, I appreciate your comment.
Ours, we want your blessing.
Yeah, the, the, the homecoming, from what I understand, it's kind of on its own, we, we just kind of wanted to throw it out there.
But we can't do anything without councils approval.
I appreciate you guys coming and explaining your thought processes and all of that, so that if people do ask me about it, I'm able to, you know, communicate that and I just want to say thank you for all of your, all of the work that goes into it, because I know that there are probably, you know, a lot of hours that you'd probably rather be doing something else, so thank you.
I was on it for three years, you couldn't pay me to do it again.
My question, if, if this goes horribly wrong, uh, are you guys open to the idea of bringing it back downtown?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, and I would, I would, I would urge you guys to consider keeping the, the, the pageant more connected with this long stretch and not so separate. And there's a patch of grass, um, right here, uh, there's a, a restroom concession stand and batting cages right here. There's that patch of grass right here that's not irrigated, that would keep you more connected with the actual runway. Um, I think that would be a great spot, uh, for you to consider, so just keep that in mind.
Absolutely, we will consider that.
It would give grass...
I didn't know that that was, there was a spot with no irrigation.
Yeah, it would give grass for some people to sit, uh, and, um, and maybe if they didn't have a chair, something's just sitting with some grass, so, yeah.
One of the concerns that we, I know it's not irrigated, one of the concerns we had, example, last year, we had major, major storms and flooding, two days straight. We're just kind of concerned as far as like setting stuff. Um, even people bringing their chairs to sit and watch the pageant, if we have soft siding grass, that's one of the concerns that we have, we don't want people...
There's a, there, actually, there's a patch of grass here that I would love to replace, so if you guys were to ruin it, that would be great.
We're on it. Wait, it's not going to rain. It's not going to rain next year.
I don't know what you're going to say.
There's a T-ball field right here, this grass is horrible, so just tear it up, okay? And we just start fresh there, in fact, we could go with a dirt infield, it'd even be better, so, bad add.
What's this guy's name, I want to write that down?
So they really don't need permission, do they?
No, I just curious, I mean, I don't...
I mean, I think it's a great idea personally.
Oh, I, I'd be afraid...
No, I mean, this was a courtesy and I appreciate you guys.
What are, what are you guys' thoughts about alcohol?
You don't want to ask me.
I really like it.
That has to be something you guys talk about, right?
Oh, yeah.
The Duller Chicken Festival has alcohol, I mean, other festivals do.
We have tried it down here.
Yeah.
I think one year we lost money, I think, um, the other year we did it, we broke even, um, and it was just, we had a lot of volunteers and it really wasn't a moneymaker. Um, that's not to say that it wouldn't be big out there though.
Yeah, because you're, you're, you're in a lot of different areas.
Right.
Tournaments and stuff going on, I think, a lot of those people...
And I think if we can find somebody that would want to do it, other than the homecoming committee, maybe a group, you know, maybe the VFW or somebody else that would want to do that, we're definitely open to it.
Yeah.
Just puts a, it just puts a lot of liability on us.
Matt and Hugo, you guys have to be pumped about advertising a ball tournament, it coincides...
Alcohol without. I prefer without, I prefer without, but...
I know, but you guys have to be excited about...
Sure, yeah, it opens up, uh, an opportunity for us, yeah, for sure.
We want to show off the park and, you know, the volleyball course, we're going to get those ready and the basketball court, so, yeah.
I can see it, I can see it advertised enough for a tournament to include fireworks on Saturday night, things like that, that would be fantastic.
I'm almost worried there won't be enough parking, every, just everybody's going to show up, like, which is a good problem, I guess, you know?
And then we talked about, we, when we met with them, we talked about parking and then you guys brought up the shuttle. I mean, when fireworks are there, they park at Chief's Supermarket, they park at these other places and then that's where that shuttle would definitely come in handy. I mean, if we have to, that, like you said, that's a good problem. That's an awesome problem to have.
I, I, I do, yeah, just, the, the challenge will be is the time of the year, um, on the calendar-wise with baseball and softball, that things are not just winding, but have wound down. A lot of the teams, communities that are playing, obviously, May, June, they get to mid-July and then things are kind of winding down, so that will be... So that will be really the challenge for us, um, you know, to try to pull that off is the timing of it. And the teams will be still into getting into some kind of thing like that.
And I know.
So even, even small scale, again, it doesn't have to be, you know, massive, grand scale, you know, we could, on a much smaller scale, we could do something.
You go together in an eight-year tournament, you'd have kids up on the ride all day.
And it would be really cool. The lights are on at night and, yeah, people are filling the parking lot. If parking becomes a problem, like, that's a good problem.
Yep, I do know that.
I'm sorry, how many parking spaces are at those two parking lots right there? Do you know, off the top of your head?
We've, we counted them.
Well, Keith made me count every single one years ago. It was a thou- it's a thousand forty-three total for the entire park.
The whole park?
So I think you'd probably chop it in maybe half, maybe half by adding the rides and stuff. So you're looking at five hundred to six hundred parking spots still left over.
I do know that Lion's Chicken Festival or barbecue chicken thing is that weekend also. So if we do something, you know, softball or whatever, we'd wanna get out there early with advertising and stuff and.
Fri- Friday night will be, we will still be in the middle of, we do an adult, um, coed church league softball league throughout the summer. So they will still be there Friday night, so that will be going on, um, no matter, uh, which is a big, we've got ten teams in that league and it's an all-night thing on a Friday night. So that will be nice and fun. And we've talked to them when we talked about parking, about making sure there's adequate parking for what they just normally do and what we already know. Um, and so that will be going on no matter. But yes, the, the youth, youth side of it, um, will be something probably more for over the weekend, Saturday. And again, some scale, even a small scale, would be just cool just to have the lights on and kids playing ball deep into the night while all the rest goes on as well.
One more thing we change, we're thinking of changing is the hours. Like we always did Thursday with the Kitty Parade starting at four and then we just went on from there. And then Friday, we didn't open back up till five. We're considering opening up at eleven on Friday, make it a whole day. You know, it is summertime, people are off work, so extending the hours is something we've talked about also.
From the ride company, as you can imagine, it's probably, you know, it's hard to find a ride company. And their complaint was, you know, our employees are sitting around when, when we couldn't, you know.
All day.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have a ride company secured?
We, we do, but we're looking for another ride company. Yeah.
So they were upset that their employees would be sitting around all day waiting for people to show up or sitting around not working?
Not working because we didn't, we didn't open up.
Okay.
With our, yeah, with our late start times on Thursday, Friday.
I guess, uh, you know, just talking to Sarah, have you given thought to going Friday, Saturday, Sunday? Instead of Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Well, you know, I was gonna talk to KJ from Chicken Festival because they moved the Chicken Festival to Thursday, Friday, Saturday. I was gonna ask his opinion, which, you know.
Yeah, cause they used to do the Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then they moved it to like mimic our schedule. So, yeah, we kinda wanna talk to him and pick his brain and see what he thinks about which is better.
That has been brought up.
On the old days, the homecoming was only Wednesday night and Thursday.
Really?
Yeah, it was Wednesday night, Thursday. And then they had to go to three days because they couldn't get a ride company to come in and set up for two days. We don't wanna set up, have a day and a half and then tear it down and leave. So that's when they went to three days.
Right.
Then, I had heard, whether it's true or not, they don't wanna bring the, bring the big rides anymore even for three days. That's just too much hassle to set them up, take them down. So if this widening out brings them in, I'm, I'm okay with that because I think that's what's missing. You've gotta have something for the junior high, high school age kids to hang around and go on. You know, uh, little rides, you know, are good for the little kids, but the middle-aged and the high school kids need something to attract them because then they'll eat and everything else. But I didn't know if the, just moving it there to a wider space will get them in? Is, is it the three-day limit that stops them? But have they?
Well, it, it's not getting, getting the ride company in, it's just getting them to big, bring, bring bigger rides. You know, that downtown is a hundred feet from building to building, but the actual area that they have to work with is only eighty feet. And they need a minimum of sixty feet on the big rides, on the rides that they brought. If we want anything bigger, they have to have over eighty feet set up.
That's fine, I, I appreciate that.
And we are looking at other ride companies. We're gonna take a different approach. Um, we do have them locked in for the summer, though.
I appreciate the, the Friday, Saturday, Sunday idea. Uh, we've talked about it ourselves, but it's something that's always, here we go, it's always been done this way.
People are not good.
It's like, look out, Wasean, here we go.
And that's, that may be a good reason to, the, uh, the parade downtown, you know? I mean, too much change, people may not show up.
Yeah, but I think you guys are open to the idea of returning it to the way it was. If it's a complete disaster.
We are very, very open to it.
If it's cricket out there, then yeah, of course we'll.
And we're open to the parade right out there, too. We could start at the high school.
Be a nice staging area in the high school parking lot.
We're open to either.
And advertising and, and, you know, get it out there, let people know, I think it wouldn't be a problem. Send it right there to buy our stuff.
Do we pay the bands now to come in from other schools? Do we pay the band?
Yes, they do get paid.
Okay. Cause there used to be a lot of bands. Then they did away, or a lot of them didn't come because the bus drivers had to be paid. The schools didn't wanna spend that much money on busing and the bus drivers and so on. And so they.
Yeah, it's, it's still that way.
I don't know, it's been a year. You was on it with my wife. And they paid bands to come at that time, the homecoming.
Yeah, but for some of them, it was a moneymaker to do that because the bus drivers volunteered back then. Now the bus drivers get paid and if they have to drive from Tenora, be there two hours, drive back, you know, and they have to drive two buses, I don't know, what do we pay them to come?
Gosh, I don't even know. Finance department.
Yeah, they could have two hundred bucks spent in bus drivers and that, so.
Yeah, easily.
For two fifty, three hundred, they may say, I don't think it's worth it, okay? That's just something that could devolve. Cause I'd like to see more bands, yeah, I think people, too, I mean, we can't do anything unless, you can't, can't give away all your money at the parade either. I think you guys put a lot of thought into it. I, I've been impressed.
We've only just begun. We, we appreciate you hearing us out. Um, I thought it would be a good idea to explain why we wanna do this. Um, a lot of people think we're crazy and we are, but, um, I truly believe in my heart that this is gonna be the answer, um, for the homecoming. It's just, everything there is perfect.
And, and the park sits empty for a lot of the time, well, why not use it?
Dorothy would be very happy. So we appreciate you listening to us. We have a lot of work to do, so. Any more questions that you have for us that hopefully we can answer?
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, committee reports, tree commission. Uh, tree commission met on November seventh, it was a Tuesday. Uh, they're working on rewriting the city's tree ordinance. It was about an hour and a half, they got through about half of it. So, uh, it's not finished, so there's no recommendations for that, and that's all.
All we did. Utility?
Utility is me. Um, we met on November eighth and we met because it was requested that we increase the water deposit for renter, renters. So it would not affect homeowners, but normally the way that it works is a rental, a renter puts a deposit in for their water and then their final bill is taken out of that deposit. Um, and the access is returned to them. And it's getting to be where the final bill is more than the deposit amount. So, um, years ago, it was seventy-five, then it was increased to a hundred and we are requesting that it be changed to a hundred and twenty-five. Anybody have any questions?
I'd make a motion to accept the utility committee recommendation.
I'll second that motion.
Recommendation that the water deposit for renters be increased from one hundred to a hundred and twenty-five dollars moved by Council Chamberlain and seconded by Council Stickley. Any discussion? Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Tirina?
Yes.
Council Snyder?
Yes.
Council President Stierz?
Yes.
Sixty, zero, N, is motion carries.
Uh, park board met on November fourteenth, uh, made some changes at the park shelter, house rentals. Uh, no open flames. Plus, uh, U sheets fee, plus the security deposit have, when the time they sign up for it. And you'll get the security deposit back if the shelter house is clean. Uh, the fencing for the pickleball courts came in at thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and the Rotary paid twenty thousand of that. Uh, Rotary Park Pavilion, uh, the floor needs to be replaced. Uh, they don't know if they wanna go with carpet or, or some other kinda thing.
I saw in the report, it said something about carpet tiles being.
Yeah, kinda squared copper tiles, like if one gets bad, you can rip that up and take it out. But they still haven't decided what they wanna do there. And one of the furnaces have to be replaced. And they also thought that, uh, blinds should be replaced.
Yeah, the blinds are pretty shoddy.
Are they?
Yeah.
Um, the mayor thought we had enough COVID money that maybe we could use that to take care of everything. Uh, the, the park signs that are around town need to be replaced or repaired. And they wanna do like one or two a year. And they got, they got a estimate, I don't know if it was from Todd Hanson.
Yes.
And it, it, for the five signs, and, and they're both, they're two-sided, so it kinda makes it kinda expensive. It'd be over about forty thousand dollars to do the five that they wanna do. I think replace two of them and repair three, three of them. But they don't wanna, they wanna do like one or two a year. Uh, Homecoming Park, there's a problem with, uh, people not picking up their dog doo-doo. And then.
I would like to see that in a minute.
Poopy. Um, and if, if something isn't done, if they keep having a problem, they were just, we're gonna have to ban the dogs in the park, I guess.
Is there some sort of maybe a PR type of thing that can go out? Kind of stating that?
I mean, we just posted it on, on our website before, haven't we, about it?
I believe we have.
Yeah.
Could there be like a temporary sign made and put it like two different places? I live out there and man, there are people walking their dogs all the time. And I'm sure it's not everybody that's, that's, you know, not doing their work. And they may not even know that we're considering not doing it. And they'll be upset, well, I wouldn't notify, cause not everybody goes to Wasean website, I'm sorry, but they, they just don't. But, you know, I'm out there and if we sat out in the patio in the summer, we might see twenty, thirty dogs a night. People walk around two, three at a time. And I'd just like to see a sign put up at each entrance over by the little kids' area and maybe back by the, uh, shelter house that, hey, if you're walking your dog, please clean up afterwards. If not, this park will be closed. Don't let them know.
And we do leave bags there in different places, so they don't have it. Even, I forgot my bag, well, they have them out there. And I don't know if you've ever ran a mower and that dog poopy on your mower. Every time it drives across, you smell it.
I bet not.
Try it sometime.
I just think some sort of a sign, doesn't have to be anything fancy, you know?
We could probably get Todd Hanson to build us one.
But I think, I think they need to be notified, not just all once it's closed.
Kevin, get your bikes back out and control it.
I just think if you're gonna say we're, we're not gonna allow dogs here anymore if you don't change your habits, like maybe it should be communicated somehow.
Yeah.
That's all.
And I, I'm guessing the majority of the people take care of it, is that ten percent?
I'd have to believe so, right, yeah.
But I know I, I've gone to that, uh, new playground that they played on and it's even out there in the middle.
Is it really?
Yeah.
I'm sure it's.
It, it, no.
Not baby?
Uh, and then they put it in the budget next year, uh, for the extra parking lot by the pool. So, um, do we have to make a motion for that park rental? Yeah.
I will move, I will move on the rental application changes.
I'll second it.
Recommendation that certain changes we made to the shelter house rental application forms moved by Council Heising and seconded by Council President Stierz. Any discussion? Council Heising?
Yes.
Council President Stierz?
Yes.
Council Snyder?
Yes.
He was reconsidering.
Council Tirina?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Sixty, zero, N, is motion carries.
What have I done? Why'd I do that? You see now, I forgot what I did. Department head reports.
Hey, yeah, um, October was a busy month. Uh, call volumes definitely picking up. Our department installed the first of three of the hearing impaired smoke detector devices in the community. That's gone over well. We've had a lot of, uh, contact with others outside our area wanting to know how to get that done. And we've been referring them to their local fire departments. The ambulance that we ordered a few years ago, we've actually seen it. It should be here shortly after Thanksgiving. So the supply chain has kinda caught up with itself. Uh, and our mental health app that we were able to purchase has gone live. Still working with Tom and the trustees on, and the mayor on EMS discussions. And we were able to get another grant. This one was for six thousand dollars and we were able to buy firefighting gloves and hoods. And that app was, uh, we used grant funds or some type of outside funds for that app, correct? Yes. Yeah. Yep. Cool.
Cause I think the story was we struggled finding things to use that money for, right?
Correct. Yeah, that's. Yep.
Have you had any other success on finding other things to use it for?
No, and nobody else has either, so they're looking at extending that money until other stuff becomes available. Alright, so they're not gonna pull it back? Correct. Nice, okay, cool. That's it.
Um, like the fire chief said, our, our call volume seems to be going up, especially crashes. Um, even over the weekend, crashes still kept coming. Uh, I'm not sure exactly what's going on, but they're, they're not, it's not in one particular place in town, it's nothing like that going on, but the crashes are definitely going up, um, throughout the, throughout the city and the county as a whole. Our Christmas for Kids deadline for the applications was Friday. Uh, we received almost two hundred applications. Um, that is a huge amount of applications.
So you can take about a fourth of that instead of?
Yeah, normally we, we were shooting for about fifty to sixty, uh, kids to select. Um, so we're, we're reaching out, we, I, Friday, we had our county chief's meeting. I reached out to get a number of, of police officers that will be there. We reached out to the fire board, Chief Kessler's gonna reach out to the other county fire departments so we can get a, a number. You know, if we can get, if we can get seventy, eighty first responders, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to do it. Um, we just gotta make sure we have enough first responders for the kids. Uh, but we'll start, uh, kinda pairing that down, uh, and checking it, uh, probably restricting it to school age kids. Um, you know, nothing younger than, than preschool, uh, that type of thing. Cause that's kind of the experiences of it is we want them to, to interact with the first responders and have that, that kind of memory and that early, um, relationship, so. Uh, yeah, now comes the hard part of making that selection, unfortunately. Uh, I know our SRO has reached out to all the schools in the county, spoke with their guidance counselors, kinda asking for, for some guidance on, you know, which families are, are in need. And we can, uh, take that into consideration as well. And then, uh, last thing, uh, not that it much matters, but I'll hold my opinion on the homecoming. Uh, if we can get it off the street, that's. Uh, if we can get it off the street, that's definitely a plus for the police department. Um, you know, I, I, I would, uh, I would be in favor of it, at least trying it out, like Council Chamberlain brought up, if it doesn't work, we can come back downtown the next year. But, um, I would, I would definitely be in favor of getting it off of, of full of the street, um, just for the traffic and different things like that. Anytime closing streets is, is much more of a pain than closing a parking lot.
I'm just glad it just, us two in the bathroom, one more person who'd been in violation.
Time to let us know.
Does somebody have a question over here?
I was just gonna say Circle K is gonna take a hit not having the.
Oh, yeah.
Right there.
And that people can't, while we're walking around with Polar Pops with their alcohol today.
Oh, that happened, huh?
I was gonna ask you guys a question.
Oh, no.
I was gonna ask you guys a question, Evergreen School has had like a, a mock train wreck.
Yeah.
You guys ever like, I mean, I don't know how far away the train is from their place, have you guys ever?
We actually did a evacuation last school year, last school year, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Um, there were, we evacuated the middle school and, was it just a middle school?
Yep, just a middle.
Just a middle school and did a lockdown at the high school and elementary. And, uh, so we, we had just done that a year ago.
Oh, have you?
I don't know how full scale Evergreen went with theirs, but yeah, we had just done one of those last school year.
I mean, they, they sent them all over to that.
Holy Trinity.
Holy Trinity, yep.
Kids were excited about three hours of, of school.
Except your daughter wanted to study, right?
No, no. Yeah, so yeah, we did an evacuation drill last year.
Keith?
All right, well, our leaf pickup is in full swing, we've got four crews out working on it, two on each side of the town, trying to get it caught up. Have had a number of complaints about the debris coming off of the leaf trucks. Well, unfortunately, the way it's designed, we have to have a screen on top because obviously if you're blowing all those leaves into the truck, you have to have somewhere for that air to come out. So, it's designed, it's got a small screen on the top to keep all the big debris out, but it doesn't keep the dust and everything out. So that, that is why you see this plume of smoke or dust coming out of the, the truck. And there's nothing we can do on it, we can't tarp it because if we do, then obviously it's going to blow up like a balloon.
Do you think it's worse than other years, or you think it's the same as that year's?
No, it's, it's the same, it's one of those things that we get every now and then. And if it's dry, it's even worse. When they're wet, they don't blow around as much, but this year it's been pretty dry. So the leaves are really making a plume around the truck. Kind of look like Pigpen from Charlie Brown, as it's driving down the street, but, uh, hopefully we will be ending that here in the near future as the leaves are starting to slow down. We have got all of our Christmas decorate, I should say, most of our Christmas decorations up. We had a little bit of scare with the star when we got it up, put it on and plugged it in, only half of it came on. But we've got it working and everyone, please cross your fingers that, at the parade, that when you fire it up, it'll actually work. Okay? We're looking at getting more updated components, but that's the original guts in the star. So, the company isn't in existence anymore, we may have to rebuild that too for next year, so, just to let you know. And working on, we just got notified a couple of weeks ago, reference a possibility of a grant that we may be able to use for the water line for Burr Road. There is a match to it, but any grant money we can get towards a million dollar project is well appreciated. So I'm gonna try and start jumping through those hoops and see how, how we go on that. I think that's all I've got, unless you've got questions.
How many people are there awarding with that grant?
It all depends on how much, they've got X amount of money and then it depends on how many projects come in though.
Oh, really?
And it's all on a point rated system on need, shovel ready, you know? If you got it in the design phase, or you're just asking for money for a project out of the blue. Fortunately for us, we've got the design, the drawings ready to go, so we can, if they give us the money, we can start it next year.
So is this federal or state?
Yes, it's state money passed through from the federal government.
Do you have any idea what possibility you've got of getting towards that?
Not until, not, I will hopefully by next council hall, I'll be able to give you a better idea based on the scoring, but let's face it, this is the main water line coming into the city. So it is an essential service, so I think we've got a pretty good shot in, or at least a portion of it.
What's the, what's their percentage?
Yeah, what's?
They're gonna do a fifty-fifty?
I think it's seventy, eighty-twenty or seventy-five-twenty-five.
I mean, a lot of feds from the airport is a ninety-ten.
Yeah.
And then the state matches five of that, so it's, it's basically ninety-five-five and the county only picks up five percent. Which is a good deal.
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
That's it?
Jamie?
Um, I don't have much to report, just, uh, I've been working on the budget, which we'll be talking about here soon. And then, um, we have open enrollment meetings for insurance next week. See you next week.
So you say, they're asking fifteen percent, Jamie?
End of November. What's that?
They're asking fifteen percent raise?
Fifteen percent raise?
For the insurance?
The insurance, um, yeah, it's about fifteen percent increase, yeah.
Is that what they're asking for?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a wheel and deal?
No, there's no wheeling and dealing.
Well, there is.
The same deductible.
They want twenty percent, I told them I'd give them ten.
The HSA deductible went up two hundred dollars based on the IRS rates.
Is there other companies that we're also looking at?
No.
We're only looking at one?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Is there a reason why we're doing that?
Because we are self-insured, so if we had to look at other companies, we would have to have all the employees fill out a form fire. And, um, go through the whole market process, but their rates would be so much more than what we pay that it wouldn't be worth the time to do that.
So Waseon is the cheapest insurer right now, I think, right, if you're self-insured, right? So, with the extra stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So we're totally self-insured?
Not totally.
Not totally.
How much? I mean, we got another company that we're dealing with, like Parma or?
Our network is with Medical Mutual.
Medical Mutual?
Yeah, that's our network, yes.
It's a good company.
Anything else? Do you have any?
No, I don't have any, no.
Yeah.
Um, so tis the season for turkeys and Christmas trees and resolutions and ordinances, we're in the process of, we'll have the normal, um, in the next, in December. The plethora of resolutions, just cleaning up the city business, just tonight, there's just, um, we have two on emergency, if council's aware, but just to, um, remind, uh, two thousand twenty-three fourteen, um, is the annual, uh, resolution necessary pursuant to the compensation plan, which requires council to determine whether or not the scale should be, the compensation plan scale should be increased to reflect the consumer price index activity for the previous year. Um, and so that's the, um, revised version is attached to the resolution. Uh, and then the other resolution, um, deals with the annexation that we've been working on. And essentially the code requires that the city just pass a resolution indicating when services will be provided and what services would be provided once those areas are annexed, um, to the city. And that's set forth in that resolution, it's just a statutory requirement that that be passed. Um, and I think we're heading down towards that process where it'll be before the commissioners and hopefully it'll get approved and, um, I think there'll be a hearing, uh, they'll have to schedule a hearing, but hopefully that will be approved then. But the resolution you guys are looking at is just indicating what services would be provided if it's annexed in. Uh, and then there's the, um, the, uh, the golf, I think the third reading on the golf, uh, court, the golf cart, um, changes and then, uh, uh, nine thirty-three oh six P is the water change, um, but. We will be, um, working, um, on some recommendations regarding a resolution in reaction to the issue two passage in terms of, um, re, uh, recreational marijuana use. Uh, we already have on the books, the, a, um, ordinance that prohibits, uh, medical marijuana growing, selling and harvesting in the city. And then council will have to determine whether or not it wants to take that same position with respect to the rest, the recreational use. Can't ban the actual use of it, we can ban the sale, harvesting and, um, grow, or, um, growing it in the city if it wants to do that. A related issue will be to what extent, if any, um, council would want to prohibit its use in public places. And I think the state is gonna be, my understanding is the state is gonna be working on that, um, issue and so we're gonna kind of keep an eye on that to see what the state's gonna do. The, I don't think the, um, ability to, to, um, for businesses to start producing and whatnot, um, takes effect for a number of months, but our thinking is to get on it sooner rather than later, just to make sure that that, if council is inclined to prohibit that, that we get that on the books sooner rather than later.
And you said Thursday that it was nine months, is that right?
Yeah, I believe it was nine months before, before retail stores would be allowed to be opened.
Was the vote, was, yeah.
It was sixty, forty, I think.
Against it?
Yeah.
And I think the township has already taken action, I think that's what we were provided by email.
Oh, has it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, uh, exchanged emails with Luke and he indicated that from any of the townships he's talked to, it seemed like that would be the trend. So, and we've got some, Luke was kind enough to send over his copy of the templates that he's gonna be using, so we'll probably pattern our regular, proposed resolution after that. Um, I think that's all I've got.
Okay, going to first reading or emergency, resolution, uh, twenty twenty-three fourteen, resolution adjusting the compensation plan, wage scales based on the consumer price index and declaring an emergency.
I'd make a motion to declare an emergency on resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. Second it.
Motion to place resolution two thousand twenty-three dash fourteen on emergency reading moved by Council Chamberlain and seconded by Council President Stierz, any discussion?
Yeah, Jamie, in the resolution I read, I didn't see a percentage, uh, is there a percentage?
It's three point seven.
Is it?
I provided the, um, packet from the CPI, it didn't get included in your packet, so I can send that out, I usually provide that to you every year.
Yeah, if the resolution could include the percentage increase, I think.
So the, on the actual form that is included in there, it's at the top right corner of the scale, it's on exhibit A, it says the change is point zero three seven.
Okay.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council President Stierz?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Tiarena?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Six days, zero days, motion carries.
Final.
Oh, yeah, Steve, second.
Motion to place resolution two thousand twenty-three dash fourteen on final reading moved by Council Schneider and seconded by Council Chamberlain, any discussion? Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council President Stierz?
Yes.
Council Tiarena?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Six days, zero days, motion carries.
Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three fifteen, resolution expressing the municipal statement of service relative to territory requested to be annexed into the city of Waseon and declaring an emergency. So what's gonna be annexed?
It'd be the enterprise area.
Oh, out there, yeah, okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion to place resolution two thousand twenty-three dash fifteen on emergency reading moved by Council Stickley and seconded by Council Tiarena, any discussion?
Did you, did you get everybody to agree out there?
Five out of the nine.
Are we annexing everything or just the five?
All nine.
Okay.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Tiarena?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Stierz?
Yes.
Six days, zero days, motion carries.
I will move on the final.
Second.
Motion to place resolution two thousand twenty-three dash fifteen on final reading moved by Council Heising and seconded by Council Schneider, any discussion?
Yeah, Tom, just some background as to why, emergency on the annexation?
Cause I think we, they have a hearing, so when you start the process and file a petition, there are a series of deadlines that are set forth in the statute. And I think one of them is to have a hearing, I'm not sure exactly when the hearing is, but we have to have the document, the resolution filed with the commissioners by, I think, next Wednesday. So it's just follow the statutory, um, time periods, and I think we were a little, we were held up a little bit by the fact that we had to go back to the, um, surveyor and get a plat, um, created for the whole distance of the, or the whole perimeter of the property.
Since there's not complete agreement out there, since there's some folks that aren't on board with it, I just wanted to make sure that those folks have an opportunity to have their voices heard.
Sure, understood.
Uh, will they have an opportunity, uh, to, to speak before the county commissioners or?
I believe there'll be a hearing held, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Tiarena?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council President Stierz?
Yes.
Six days, zero days, motion carries.
Appreciate you asking that.
Without the final one on that one?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Uh, second reading, ordinance twenty twenty-three five, ordinance amending section nine three three point six of the codified ordinance of the city of Waseon. Is that for the golf carts?
As for the water?
Oh, the water, I'm sorry.
Surcharge for the county.
Okay.
Second. Second reading. I just made a motion for the second reading.
Did you make the motion?
I made a motion for the second reading.
I will second the second reading.
I thought you were seconding. I all of a sudden felt like I was an island.
I thought maybe I talked and you hear it. Motion to place ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash five on second reading moved by Council Chamberlain and seconded by Council Heising, any, any discussion?
Like, what did I just do?
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council, Council Tiarena?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Stierz? Council President Stierz?
Yes, he said yes.
Oh, sorry. Six days, zero days, motion carries.
Now, are we on the third one now?
No, it's a golf cart.
Now it's Brandon's.
Twenty twenty-three ordinance amending section three seven seven, the codified ordinance of the city of Waseon.
I'll make that motion.
I'm sure you would, that's right.
I'll second it.
Oh, yeah.
Motion to place ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash four on five, on third reading moved by Council Tiarena and seconded by Council President Stierz, any discussion? Council Tiarena?
Yes.
Council President Stierz?
Yes.
Steve, sit closer to him.
Council Schneider?
Yeah.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six days, zero days, motion carries.
I was looking ahead at new business.
He was like that in class.
When I showed up.
You cannot leave safety in code.
Nope, yeah, I'll stay on, there we go.
So we're at new business. Um, as acting mayor, I'm gonna give everybody Thursday off.
Well, Sunday.
Sunday too, then. Uh, motion to approve the twenty twenty-four scheduled council meetings.
I'll make that motion.
Scott, I figured you'd make that motion.
Nah, I, I, I wanna go to two meetings, three.
I figured you would, right, yeah.
Who's seconding?
Nobody, yeah. I will second the idea.
Would you?
Yep.
You're a good man.
Motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four schedule of council meetings moved by. Motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four schedule of council meetings, moved by Council Stickley and seconded by Council Chamberlain, any discussion? Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Tiarena?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Stierz?
Yes.
Six days, zero days, motion carries.
Motion to approve employees' Christmas gifts, Christmas gifts for two thousand twenty-four.
I will move.
I'll second.
Motion to approve the employee Christmas gift for two thousand twenty-four, moved by, huh, when that be two thousand twenty-three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Way to pick up on that. Who made that?
Did you go past your state with the seventy-five dollars that we've been doing for the past?
Is that what we're doing?
Well, I'm asking.
Oh.
Cause there was nothing in the, in, in the packet.
We're gonna find out here, it matters seconds.
So is there discussion now?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Council Heising?
Oh, now I have no idea what I voted on.
I think we're at a point of discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wait, it's on seventy-five dollars, though, was in the past?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Right.
So is that where we're at?
Yeah.
The hundred, seventy-five.
And seventy-five dollars was in the form of chamber bucks?
Yes.
And the idea is to stick with chamber bucks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right.
Are we leaving it at seventy-five?
Sure, I'm good with that.
You're not getting it, though.
If she was, she would've suggested more.
It's employees, not us.
I, I understand.
Uh, good luck, go ahead.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Tiarena?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council President Stierz?
Yes.
Six days, zero days, motion carries.
That was for twenty-three, right?
Yes.
Seventy-five dollars.
Transfer of liquor license sold by Los Mary Osgies to Harbin Arrows, did I say that right?
You're close, Harbin Arrows.
I didn't think we had to vote on those.
You don't, just sit and be quiet, if you don't like it, if you like it, just sit and be quiet.
Aren't we a little late on transfer, I mean, they're already in business.
Sure.
One would, uh, raise that question, yes, this is, when it's been presented to council, though. Um, yeah.
Department electric control is still a little bit behind.
Okay. But we don't have to act on it, right?
No. Unless you have an objection of some type.
Anything on old business? Uh, approval of the bills?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion to approve and pay the bills as presented, moved by Council Schneider and seconded by Council Heising, any discussion? Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Tiarena?
Yes.
Council President Stierz?
Yes.
Six days, zero days, motion carries.
I really don't feel like a juror right now.
You don't?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion to adjourn, moved by Council Stickley and seconded by Council Tiarena, all in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We invite you all to stay.